I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So next up is roll call.
Neil?
Here.
Brazil?
Here.
Conley?
Here.
Pedro?
Present.
Schwab?
Here.
Okay, next approval of agenda. I need a motion if there is no changes to this agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as... Go ahead, Donna, sorry.
Do you want a track update? Stuck in here somewhere? Bring one over here. Is that it? Informational? Be informational, yeah. Just the number five under information? Yeah, just to bring up the speed of conversation.
Okay, so may I have a motion then to that amendment?
I'd like to make a motion to have made them five, just a really quick little track conversation.
Okay. Anyone else? So may I have a second to Donna's motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call.
Neil?
Aye.
Brazil?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Pedro?
Aye.
Schwab?
Aye.
Okay, this is our part of a public presentation.
I have two. One is Miriam, she wants to do recognition, and then Ms. Tanya has a couple of short little videos she would like to show us.
And possibly her mirror?
She's best sister, Marianne.
Yeah, if she shows up.
Okay.
I think our board president, also Mary Bill, would like to join me and the rest of the board and everyone in this room in recognizing Beba for his Red Cross Hero Award. I know the awards assembly is coming up here, third week in March, yeah, and so we just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge how proud we are to have you on our staff and just really recognize the kind of individual you are to sacrifice yourself for another. So, Mary, would you like to?
I reiterate that sentiment, and as written in the card, again, God bless you and that your generosity be rewarded tenfold. That is a promise, and truly I see that your... this act of heroism deserves at least that multiplier effect by 10. I'm sure it'll be more than that, and again, you represent us, and I'm proud to say that you do. So thank you very much, Beba, on our behalf.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
While the gift in here is not 10 times what your purpose is worth, it's just a token of our appreciation. I'm gonna get this down, but I gotta go home.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Beba.
Okay, our next presentation.
Ms. Tanya, turn around and look at the board.
So, this last weekend was... was the Missoula Children's Theater, which was kids eighth... our kindergarten, it was... did we have anyone past eighth grade in it?
No one past eighth grade. It's open to kids twelve, but eight, three was old.
Okay, so I just have a couple of short clips that turned out really well. Hang on, my volume... my volume did it again. Something about... it's just not liking it here. Okay. What's up?
I would have recognized it anywhere.
It was the Swamp Dings.
If you're not sure what this one is in the center there, kind of the gold, she's a mosquito.
She's a mosquito. We had a dragonfly and a turtle and a fly.
Yes.
And a frog. And a frog and an alligator.
And an aspen tree.
An aspen tree.
Oh, an aspen tree.
The alligator, the frog, and the aspen tree, and this one's not very long.
The frog is sad right now.
So that one didn't record very long, but then this is probably everyone's favorite.
The ducks? Is it the ducks?
Oh, yes.
Good.
And the goose.
Because I heard about the ducks.
Honk honk. Look at the ears. They're giving directions to the castle.
It was the best.
That's it. I just wanted to be able to share some of those cute pieces.
It was the cutest show.
It was amazing. I laughed, I cried, it was great. It was a wonderful production and it was very well done, and for the kids only having 20 hours of practice time or whatever it is, it was just amazing.
Actually, they had 17 hours.
Yeah.
And so the Friends of the View sponsor bringing them to town, and we've already talked about it, we are going to bring them back next year. I already scheduled my date for that same weekend in February. Tony and I talked about it today, about feasibility and how everything worked in, and thank you to Tanya for being so accommodating with getting them out of school that related, you know, to the view. And then the first hour high school culinary class packed sack lunches, and so the kids were fed for the entire weekend. The Missoula team told me this is the first school district they've come to where we actually provided food. They had a rough time coming into town, they sprung a coolant leak. I chauffeured them on Monday, took them down to get a rental truck in Springs on Tuesday. We managed to make it work, their truck got fixed in time, and they were able to load up and get out of town, but they were a wonderful group. We had 23 kids total in the show, four of them were homeschool students, so we got some homeschool kids involved as well.
Oh, that's cool.
So, yeah, it was a great week. And then two shows on Friday, so I asked the junior high kids this morning, you know, how they were doing, and they said they were tired, that they would 100% do it over again. So we're gonna bring them back.
It was, it was great.
Yeah, it was.
I laughed so hard.
It was just so great.
But every time those ducks goom about, I laughed all harder. So the thank yous, is there something that is... has been done there and that it's appropriate and, what, visible?
As far as...
As far as their time that they spent. Who's kind?
The Missoula.
Yes, the Missoula.
Or Friends of the View.
And Friends of the View.
What's the... I'm so sorry, what's the question?
So, I mean, did we give them a very audible thank you for...
Not yet, and so the... I mean, I did give a very audible thank you to the Missoula, but I'm sure the Friends of the View would maybe appreciate like a card or something if you're... if that's what you're...
That, or, I mean, even just a picture off of that, and we put it in the paper, thank you.
We have been given a shout out and a picture and notice on social media.
Oh, we've done a lot, yeah, there's been social media, but not yet in the paper. Let's put it in the paper where everybody sees.
Or maybe the city council.
Oh, that's a great idea.
Yeah, again, I think it's always important that we're very visible and audible about the thank yous for the opportunities, that they would, you know, go forward and even bigger and better, because, you know, appreciation buys a lot of opportunities. So, again, if something would be done that way.
Okay.
Okay? Okay, and then we had another on our public presentation.
We lost her.
Yeah, we lost her?
Yeah, she showed up early and caught Miriam, and Mary Bill told her the meeting started at six and can't find her. So, maybe she'll come back next March.
Okay, so then we will move on. I would say let us know if she shows back up.
Yeah.
So then superintendent's principles and department reports, celebrations and challenges.
So before I get into my board report for March, you might notice that it was slightly different, rather than speaking to the work that was done in the month, I really spoke to my goals for the 2022-23 school year, just to give you an update on the progress that I've made, and then also, you know, considering what goals are going to follow me into the upcoming school year. So any questions, anything I can answer for you all?
I'll put somebody in the mind reader. This little piece I forgot, because it was on my list of questions. The number of grades. No, it's all great. So the 80 truancies or risk of truancy violations, how does that feel?
No, that's for the... you're referring to the years, you know, grant data. So these are people that we are... that we have worked with throughout the entire district, who have had either close to getting that 10 absences in a school year or have exceeded 10 absences in a school year. And Dan and Tanya have done a really great job, having the student family and success advocates, working with these families, finding out what the issue is, why are the kids missing so much school, and they have seen improvement with those children because of that one-on-one contact from the school.
Is it like a common thread? Getting here, lack of parental support?
I mean, a lot of it's either unexcused or ill.
I guess they're ill. I was curious about that.
Any other questions? So successes, just referring back to the incident on the 22nd of February, the response by Purple Creek PD, the dating officers, and Tyler County Sheriff, and Purple Creek Victor School District employees was very swift, very appropriate, and again, thank you to Dan for working with Safety and Security Committee, leading those efforts, working with CCPD to ensure that our building is safer and that staff know procedure and protocol. We are continuing to work with Purple Creek PD and Colorado School Safety Resource Center to strengthen our response protocol even more. Some challenges, again, referring to that particular situation, when and what information to share during an emergency situation, that's something I'm getting additional guidance on, but just so that people feel like they are getting the information that they need, we understand that these are their children, while also protecting the school and helping it up to multiple abilities, so.
Show it up and...
Yeah.
That's it?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
So we'll follow the example and ask if there are any questions over my report, if you'd like me to talk a little bit more now.
Dan, I did just talk to Courtney. I told her that I had offered last year to help, and we're gonna try to get our schedules to dive, because, you know, there's free money out there. It could be a little bad. This was fascinating, the attendance comparisons, so inquiring minds want to know, did the higher rates on Valentine's Day have anything to do with it being Valentine's Day?
No, those are pretty standard. Those are pretty normal numbers. We're above 90% most days.
That's great.
And then, you know, if that is just a one-to-one comparison, again, that recognition that we do lose kids on those remote days, and we are, you know, the surveys are going out, you know, again, who doesn't have internet versus, you know, some people have snowed out, some people, you know, at the high school level, some of them are caring for their kids who are in the elementary, and so they're not even, you know, we're trying to suss that out. It's not terrible by any means, you know, you're looking at our lowest number at 88%. That's not awful, but that's still lower than the average, the regular, like 90 to 94%. So just aware, you know, as we do use remote days in place of snow days, we are losing a few kids in the process, but is that better than losing everybody for a snow day? I would say yes, but that's just something we need to continue to refine with that small group that we use on snow days. Again, this is just a one day, like any other given snow day that might be a little better, that might be...
That's great.
Yeah, it's not, it's not terrible.
Any other questions for Dan?
No, but I loved Eliza Pickering.
Oh, me too. I didn't...
I had never heard of that.
I learned a lot.
And we also, I had two of my seniors in American Government Class interview with Pat Hill today, and she's doing a write-up in the Courier, about this and about voting and about the importance of voting, and about, like, the conversation went a little off track, so I think she... there's gonna be conversation about the importance of being able to have civil discourse as opposed to... I hope my... I wasn't in there, I trust my shades a lot. I don't think they came on track, so we'll see how that goes. The last piece I'd like to bring up, if we have a moment, I apologize for not getting it in there, but under the comments, the recommendations, the whole event, as Miriam said, that was a really challenging day for everybody in the district. It's important, I hope people will recognize that we can call it a whole event now, but the real language around that, like in the moment, was we... everybody was under a life-threatening threat, you know, and going through that with students and faculty is very challenging. So just keeping that in mind, that, you know, that is fresh with some families and with some faculty as well. And then the class of 2025 credits and transcripts piece, I mean, I should say, actually, class of 2024, that was a stage cutting, but I shared with you another document that I called Hybrid Allowance, which I'll send to you. I'm not asking for a vote, this is an awareness, this is something that I'm talking to Miriam about, and to summarize it, in the fall of 2020, when we were in hybrid mode, we saw an excessive number of Fs from students. Hybrid mode was brand new for kids, it was brand new for students, it was also brand new for faculty, and when you compare the Fs during that semester with the Fs in the other semester since then, they're dramatically higher. And so what that means for my students who are going to be graduating next year, you know, there's some numbers there in the middle, I have 23 juniors going into the class of 2024, out of 23, 12 of them are not on track to graduate.
Oh, geez.
That's a large number. Eight of those 12 have been with us their entire high school career, so, you know, four of them transferring in, you know, it's hard to suss out their experiences, so I'm really talking about eight. Eight of those 12 have been with us for all of high school, and of those eight, all of them failed two or more classes during that hybrid semester. So I want to go to sync it for a second. Out of those eight kids, all of them failed two or more classes during that hybrid semester. When I look at that, I see, you know, that's a confluence of, you know, that's a perfect storm of newness, of mistakes, of lack of internet access, of teaching teachers that didn't know what they were doing yet, of families, of students that didn't understand what was going on, you know, when there's such a discrepancy between that single semester and the semester since then, it strikes me as, you know, something we need to pay attention to. If you took out the failures of that hybrid semester, five of those eight would be 100% on track to graduate. Three of them would still be in minor jeopardy and have some makeups that they have to do this summer or next year. So that's a pretty significant number, if you're talking about approximately 20% of the graduating class would be back on track if we looked at that hybrid semester a little bit differently. So something I'm considering, but I don't... not sure what I want to do with it yet, but I'm tentatively calling it a hybrid semester allowance, you know, and looking at ways, how can we help these kids that, you know, we failed during their first semester of their freshman year? And is there a way, if you remember a year and a half ago, I'm the one that came in and said we need to change our graduation requirements to 26 to, you know, to really be on par? I am wondering if we might offer an allowance to offer some of these students the ability to graduate with 24, 25 next year as a way to balance out that semester. If we did that, seven of our seniors, it would drop from 12 to seven off track, and three of those seven have been a CCP for all of high school, so we would drop from eight of our kids not ready to graduate to three of our kids not ready to graduate. And I, when I say not ready to graduate, like, they're within two or three credits, like, they can make it up by going to summer school, but I'm not worried about that. But that sheer number of 12 or eight of our own, that's a lot out of any class. As an example, coming into this year, we had two that were not on track, they're both going to graduate this year, but going from two to 12.
And you're looking at just kind of, not just the core classes, the required ones, so it's not gonna impact them?
Absolutely not.
Chats or the state?
Absolutely not. And again, the state, the state will go with what we agree with, and so when we say 26, that's taking seven courses and passing seven in your freshman year, seven in your sophomore year, six or seven in your junior year, six or seven in your senior year. So when you start to fail classes, you get behind, you know, our most rigorous curriculum, our students are gonna graduate with 28 credits, because they're given seven, 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 seven. We can graduate with 26, but some of these kids, it will be a challenge for them to get to 26 without having to take an extra semester or without having to take an extra year, and I worry at that point how many of those kids drop out.
Yeah.
So if we can, if we can find the grace, I would sign off on it as the principal. I would guarantee the board they're doing their core, they're still completing their graduation capstone. I should also say that all of these students since that semester, you know, they're doing fine, I mean, they failed a class here and there, but none of them have failed multiple classes in a single semester like they did that first semester of their freshman year. So it's something I would just like you guys to think about, and if it's something you think you might support, I don't think there needs to be a vote necessarily, I think this is something the highest principal will take responsibility for attesting that they are ready to graduate, but it needs to be a hope we can put it on a later agenda, we don't have to make this decision until we're down to it. And I'm front-loading it now, because my college counselor, Chris Lucas, and I are meeting with all of these students and their families to be graduated, so I would like to be able to talk to them about one thing we're looking at is, you know, the fact that they failed that class, it stays on their transcript, it's not anything that we're taking off their transcript, it just gives us a little bit of a sense, yeah, that semester was really hard on us, so. Anyway, that's all that is.
Well, it seems to me, just, you know, there's enough anxiety and stress that it would... the decision would be better made sooner than later, and then, so basically, you're asking for a variance from this. I would definitely want the proper stamp on that, so that we don't have something come back and haunt us. So I don't... I'm not sure of this, because it's, in my years, has never come up, and so I think that the process in terms of accepting this, if you could do the research and then come back to the board with something that is in our packet that would describe what we are going to implement, and then, again, I would want full transparency, that if it does need to go to a vote, that again, it would be, like I said, a proper agenda item, so that...
I can definitely do that.
Yeah, and again, I... it has some extended repercussions, because they're going to go on and apply to other schools, and so that we want to make sure that this does not weaken their position in terms of scholarships or entrance to other education.
Yeah, and I can... I have some of that, just qualitative, not quantitative, in terms of, we've had a couple of students, you know, graduating this year whose transcripts from other schools have been questionable a lot because of COVID, and colleges are very understanding right now.
Yeah, and again, that we just use the right language, that they don't... they're not put in a precarious position to defend this when they might not have adequate knowledge to defend it, okay?
Well, and I don't want to see that they, you know, all you have to finish this, come back for a semester after all their peers have graduated and turn them into dropouts.
I think there's a way to do it, that we can do it on a, you know, free transparency and where everybody's gonna understand our decision, including colleges and scholarship opportunities, I think, I don't think those will win.
Is there a way to note that on the transcript?
What's that?
Is there a way to add that on a transcript as a notation?
There is, you know, and transcripts, if colleges request it, you know, we send them, this is what it takes to graduate, this is what it takes, you know, our top students look like this, and this is what the average student, you know, a diploma at 26 versus our most rigorous curriculum at 20. But, yeah, you can add a note. Since I have been here, I haven't had a single college ask for that from our students. But we should be able to do that if it was...
Yeah, I just, you know, I'd hate to have somebody get denied access because of something they really didn't have any control over.
Right.
That would be heartbreaking.
I'll put together something more formal. I'll put together something more formal.
And again, I appreciate your, your research because again, this is a protective factor. And, and to understand the background on this will be a good for these kids. Thank you.
Didn't we also get like two or three recently from other schools that they kept all Fs? And these are online, they were online? And so I think we're going to get more and more of that, but that's going to really affect us.
Well, and some of that, Meryl, like when you're, when you're dealing with transcripts from other schools, we have, we have some jurisprudence to manage that as a component. There are some schools that do not give students credit for classes unless they achieve a certain test score. If we can show by an entrance exam that they've actually passed that, even if they're going to get the test from the previous school, we're allowed to award them a pass fail credit. Can't give a GPA. That students transfer in, one of the main schools with their local. We had some students that attended those schools for a year and a half who were on the autistic spectrum with IEDs and awarded credit for a year and a half. And that is, that school is doing something. I would say we're not serving that school. There are students going a year and a half and not earning a single credit. So we have some, we have some leeway for them coming in to work with our school and their counselors to figure out what an accurate transcript would look like under our system.
Okay, any other questions for Dan? Then you're on, Tanya.
Anyone have any questions? It's a hard act to follow.
Ah.
I mean, you're right.
I really liked the pictures. I thought it was great for the university day with a big success and congratulations on that.
So the picture is actually one that Emily designed that is on social media. So these are the types of things that Emily, those of you who aren't on social media, those are the things that she's, types of things she's posting for us.
Very good. I thought that looked like fun. How nice to have that big of a turnout.
Yes. I, I don't think that our turnout was normal for us, but we had, just sort of through the rumor, we had several families stay home that day. It was, you know, it was a tough choice of, we also had families where the parent came in and they felt better saying, I got to come in. So, you know, it was, I think, a lower than average from us. We had a couple of really cool things. You know, I sent out a message saying that all families need, anyone coming in needs to present an ID. Not one person complained about standing in line waiting to present their ID. It was, you know, it was very nice. And great feedback from the parents, you know. Just ask them, what's the most interesting thing you learned? And several of them were like, there are standards about rhyming. Yes, yes, there are. So it was, it was good from that point of view. The other thing, the, the previous day, the day before that, I think we learned a lot. I was very proud of our staff. Not one of our kids left our building knowing there was even a problem that day. So our kids had as normal a day as we could possibly give them. Kudos to our local police force, sheriff's department for a couple of things. One, having been in our building often enough to walk in our building and know what they were doing. Two, having been in our building enough that when the littles said something, it was like, hey, what are you doing here today? It was not an instant panic for our kids. So, and the fact that they've been in our building, I mean, they, they came in our building and went. So it was a lot of kudos to them and for being very visible at the end of the day. Right down to the animal control truck. It was pretty good to have our animal control truck patrolling the street between the two buildings. And because there were no after-school activities, we had kids waiting on the second shuttle even after we had an extra run. And CCPD waited with them. So I have already thanked Chief Bright, but I definitely wanted to commend to you guys and let you know, they, they were here so fast that the dispatch was still on the phone with us. So.
That needs to be brought up at city council too.
That was.
Because they are struggling with the number of officers that they are lacking. It is bad.
And it, and it was, it was a journey between, you know, three different agencies. It was pretty impressive. And the staff also just. It was, and, you know, there were some, as many as there were, you know, maybe some upset parents about what did or didn't happen. There were also some thankful parents, so.
Okay. Any other questions for Tanya? So I, I think it was a decision of ours that if there was not further agenda items, that you are free to go. But you can stay. Oh, man, look at the time.
Mr. Crawford is here to present on behalf of Desi. Nice having you.
The only question I have is, I can't believe you're there. But there's nothing in this report about what happened with whole, with you guys with the preschool, how did it work there?
I think it was just like a regular day. And yeah, the staff was a little, you know, concerned about, you know, communication, I think was the most thing that we heard back from them. So, but I think that we addressed it, addressed their concerns going forward. So we're going to, you know, keep them informed about what's going on as soon as we find out any information. So, yeah, the kids, they, they don't care. And, yeah.
We're also working with Colorado School Safety Resource Center specifically on how to manage that age group and how to keep them safe because they present a whole nother unique set of challenges, right? That older kids don't. So we're working on getting a training schedule and really focusing on that age group.
As this was, I think it's going to be better for us going forward. We're definitely more prepared.
And so our next board meeting is a training.
Yep.
Yes, that I think starts at five. And so perhaps that information might be included in that.
I hope so.
Okay, so if you would make a note on your list there, that that would be brought forward. I think that would be something we're all interested in as well as a comfort to the, the staff.
Yeah, we have been brainstorming about new ideas about, because you're, how to keep our children safe. Yeah, that's important to do that.
Okay, thank you very much. And you're free to go also.
And Jason, I'll work with you and Desi.
Okay, awesome. Awesome, all right. Thank you.
Wait, we're rolling this out, aren't we?
Danny took off, so.
Okay.
No questions, I guess you can email me now.
Okay. Okay, next is our, our second reading of revised policy.
This is just the second reading of revised policy. JLCD administering medicines to students and JLCD-R administering medicines to students.
I had one question behind this list of work. Do we, we actually stock at the one Tylenol to hand out to kids?
Only if their parents bring it in and there's an order for it. So it goes through the same procedure as a prescription medication.
And then, is there, I don't know anything about drugs. Is there a shelf life for some of these things like?
Yes. Yeah, and so that's part of the nurse's duties is to check the, so that's part of the document as well, the expiration date when the med, when the medication is brought in, that they also go through and regularly check. It's just part of their, their duties.
Because I would say, again, it would be like if we were having, if we had spare EpiPens and the cats lung and we need to make sure that it doesn't sit there forever.
Yeah.
And rot.
No, yeah, they do that quite often, actually.
Okay, and there's a type of, we're just typing those down. Under procedure number five, this is in a letter.
Under procedure number five, a prescription medication.
Have not, have not, have.
Got it.
Or have, or have.
My question is on JLCD-R, number one, all directives of the accompanying policy will be followed. Is the accompanying policy JLCD?
Yes.
Okay, so may I have a motion to approve this?
I'll move that we approve the second reading of JLCD and JLCD-R.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call.
Fields?
Aye.
Brazil?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Dodger?
Aye.
Schwab?
Aye.
Okay, moving forward to new business is the consent agenda. So of those three items, is there questions in regards to any of that? So seeing that there isn't any, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move the, to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Aye, I'll second it.
Okay, roll call.
Fields?
Aye.
Brazil?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Dodger?
Aye.
Schwab?
Aye.
Okay, next up is approval of February 2023 payables and payroll. Okay, may I have a motion then, please?
I'll move that we approve the February 2023 payables and payroll.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Fields?
Aye.
Brazil?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Dodger?
Aye.
Schwab?
Aye.
Okay, next up is the first reading of the board policy revisions.
And so these policies were sent to you all because there was a number of them so you'd have the opportunity to read through them sooner. I'll go ahead and read through those, that's a little bit easier. BBA, Board Powers and Responsibilities. BC, School Board Member Conduct. BC-R, School Board Member Financial Disclosure. BCA-E-2, Board Member Code of Ethics. BCB, School Board Member Conflict of Interest. BDA, Board Organizational Meeting. BDF, Advisory Committees. BDFC, Preschool Council. BEC, Executive Sessions. BEDV, Agenda. BEDD, Rules of Order. BEDF, Voting Method. BEDG, Minutes. BEDH, Public Participation at School Board Meetings. BG, School Board Policy Process. BID/BID, School Board Member Compensation, Expenses, Insurance, Liability. Anything that, any questions, anything you've noticed? This would be the time to discuss then.
I have questions.
Okay?
Under BDFC, Preschool Council, Gold Town Learning Center has been closed for 20 years. They used to be over there in the apartment by the museum. Gold Town Learning Center?
My son went to that one.
So it's 20 years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's long, long, long one time they've been gone. And so that made me wonder, are there other members that should be in that space? Like another care center?
I can certainly look into that.
I just, you know, if it's, if we're, if it's the whole community, maybe there's another center. Yes, I.
I know, I think for a long time.
Check with Desi. Any other concerns, questions about the red line policies?
Okay, then may I have a motion, please?
I'll move that we approve the first, the first reading of all of those policies that she just read off. That's a good way to do it.
That was good. It seemed like five minutes. No lie. Your call.
Fields?
Aye.
Brazil?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Dodger?
Aye.
Schwab?
Okay, the next is approval for the extension of a two-year superintendent contract.
Would you all prefer to do the executive session prior to the approval of?
No. I make a motion for the approval and the extension of two years with the superintendent's contract.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call.
Fields?
Aye.
Brazil?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Dodger?
Aye.
Schwab?
Aye.
Okay.
Can I, I mean, just one quick thing. I wanted you to typo so if it could get cleaned up.
Which one?
The contract?
Yeah.
There's like, maybe where we have the her and she and his or some of that, if you could just put the superintendent instead of having a pronoun.
Yeah, because there's like, she's a him in the same paragraph.
Yeah.
We don't want that.
And then, there's just, it just needs a little tidying up in the typing. Some of the formatting isn't the same. The pronouns, spacing, stuff like that. Just, just, I mean, I have nothing wrong with the contract or the extension. It's just the details like that. Yeah. Like 7.1. Yeah, that's a period. In hers individual capacity, unless she's multiple people. Anyway, that's it. Do you want me to give you the paragraph numbers where I found the rules?
No, I'll go, I'll just go through it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll do word search and go through it.
All right, and then I have a question because I'm not sure if I'm literate or what. So paragraph eight, notwithstanding arid not as modification, what does that mean?
I have no idea. I thought it was legal ease.
The only thing I know of is arid is a desert.
Yeah. You're a deal.
I can double check if there's a layer on that one.
Okay.
Okay, I'm just, I have never heard that used like that.
I didn't too.
I didn't know if it was a typo or. I didn't know if it was a typo or.
It could be.
If it's a term, it's.
Yeah, go back from Google Docs to Word to Google Docs to Word, sometimes things get lost.
Okay. I have no clue what that was.
And moving on, approval of the E-Rate contract for access points.
So, you know, Merrill, we did this great presentation about our access points and you guys voted true and forward with that. I told you, Chad, stay here and help me explain anything. But they helped us apply for or bid, request.
E-Rate funding.
I think it was request.
Requested E-Rate funding and these are the two people, the two companies, the original company that Merrill went with and then one additional company who really didn't even address our request.
Is that what I had the weird like things instead of like.
Yes.
I would never.
I, I don't know why. It just looked like a big advertisement to me.
Yeah.
But that's the two requests that came in, but because the amount is so large, it's 80,000 plus, we needed the board approval to move forward with this contract.
What are we getting from E-Rate?
We're getting funding.
Yeah, we're trying to get more funding.
To help pay for these, these access points.
Do we have a dollar amount yet from them?
Well, half of, or I don't know, half of it, but there's like two parts to E-Rate. And the, we always just always applied for the one part.
Correct.
And that was for the fiber that comes in and we're all, we're already getting that for free.
That's for free.
Okay. But the other that we've never applied for is actually things that are more in the infrastructure part and we're trying to get that money.
Is there a chance we might get additional?
Yes.
So I guess we got it all?
What?
If we got all of that funding?
I, I don't know, it's just, you know what it depends on is how many kids are on the free lunch, you know, and why and that's how they figure it out. I think we're at 70%.
We're just over 70 right now.
So you get 70%.
Wanda has been really wonderful and has been submitting, I think, more than necessary. Every time CDE sends us, the nutrition unit says, hey, you need to update your draft certification, she's going in and doing another submission for us. So she's really staying on top of it.
So what happens when everybody gets free lunch?
Well, that, yeah, that's part of what we.
Everybody already does.
Yeah.
Breakfast and lunch.
But this is why we want to continue to gather.
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
Well, this is one reason why we want to.
So any other questions?
I don't have any.
Okay, may I have a motion then, please? I'll move that we approve and the extension of, no, wrong one. Approve the E-Rate contract for access plus points. Second?
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Beal?
Aye.
Brazil?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Dodger?
Aye.
Schwab?
Aye.
Okay.
I would tell those other people that was a really poor presentation.
I know.
I, I was like, well, why couldn't you just lay it all out like the other guy did?
I know, dude, it was messy.
Okay, then moving down to informational, we have five items. Update on Bosse's.
Our last meeting was canceled. The assistant director from Bosse's, assistant special ed director, has resigned and has moved to District Three. There's what? He's resigned. And? There's nobody there. Oh, nobody there, okay. So there's an opening for the meeting's open for tough. And then the next, our next meeting's the 20th. I don't have anything more possible to say than you know.
Um, yes, actually, but I need to.
And then after this next in-person meeting, that June meeting will be a Zoom meeting. Somewhere in there, there's supposed to be a workshop. I think there's been a person change from management. Nothing else terribly exciting going on there. Questions?
No.
No.
Thank you. Okay, update on construction trades building.
So Florida's done all the concrete inspections, it's passed. Framing is going up nearing about 50% done with all the framing and the walls going up. Plumbing's in lots, there's just a lot happening right now, like between them all being in the building together. So like we've got all these different contractors in there, but they work really well together. Like our plumber, he comes in, it's like 5:00 AM.
Oh my.
And then he's out of there, but they all, great communication, they work really well together. Everything is passing inspection, so fire alarm is going to be going in. I don't know if it's started or not yet, I have not heard on that. HVAC and furnaces are going in. And yeah, so we've got the state inspectors down too and everything's looking great. We're, we're, we said into March and I believe we will hit that deadline for the end of March.
Yes.
Yes.
Congratulations.
And just so that you are aware, the conversation we had about having a meeting there, we do have to have the certificate of occupancy in order to do so and it doesn't look like that's going to happen by, by that third week in March. The problem is, is we can go in there, we can be in the building, we can tour, but we can't bring anything like furniture in there, right and hey, you know, so set up shop kind of. But, but I've got some ideas to, to make sure that we get folks out there as part of our afternoon without doing anything that can get us into trouble, right, get us shut down. So, yes, we don't, no.
After all this work and time.
That's great.
Congratulations.
So proud of, so proud of you.
So the last time I was over there talking to Dwayne and he said Wednesdays was usually a good day to, to stop in, is it still kind of?
Oh yeah, you know, really, they've been really great about letting us bring staff over and, and take a peek in. If you know in advance that you want to pop in, let me know or let Dwayne know, just because there is so much going on right now, but it doesn't seem to be an issue at all.
They're there Fridays too, right?
Um, most of the time, yeah.
If I wanted to go on a Friday, is that a problem or?
You know, if, if you let me know which Friday, I'll double check with Dwayne and just make sure that there's somebody around, but I have keys now.
Oh wow. This is gonna start walking like.
You have doors, right?
Yes, that means you have doors.
That's good. Do you think they probably like the fact that people are interested? I really want to go see, I just have to figure out a time.
So can we walk through the board attended events that are going to be coming up between this board meeting and the next where more than two of you might be present? We have the stakeholder community meeting on March 20th to go over CTE programs and possible funding sources. Are there any other?
Just with you talking about that, can I bring up some things? So number one, we did send out an invite and again, you got emails about anybody that you wanted invited and so these are two envelopes for your two guests.
Right.
Okay, and so.
We also need one, need to know a date and time for Jeff Holler so he can present and tell everybody a little bit about his CTE. What time is that?
3:00 PM.
Okay, I have three.
Okay, so I have, I didn't put yours in an envelope because I'm saving the envelopes. So this is the invite.
Okay, thanks.
And this is the same graphic we used for when we opened the community event for the RISE grant. So here, and I, and Chris Eric again is responsible for putting this together. I handed out seven invitations last Wednesday at the Kribble Creek City Council and basically they will have to have the same provision that, you know, they have to notify that all seven or six, five board members will be there together. The two additional ones were for Frank, the city manager, and the other one was for Paul Harris. I handed out the six to the city of Victor, which was the council, and I just gave them to Glory and that was Friday. She'll have to do the same provision and if you would follow up on that, Connie, I would be appreciative. And she got an invitation also.
That's the city council members?
Of Victor.
Of Victor.
Okay, and then I dropped off the four invitations for the county commissioners and I have a meeting with Dan Williams tomorrow morning, so I'll make sure that he got his along with Ross, their county administrator. I called and spoke with Caitlin, who's the community liaison for the Kribble Creek Victor Mine, so she said they will be there and along with a guest or two. So that's that. I asked Ted and Lisa Noble to come because, and Rich Ingold. Ted and Lisa because they represent the Community of Caring Foundation and the programs that are connected to the school as well as the Adult Career Education Center. And then I also asked Rich Ingold, who's been very active with the American Legion and any kind of school things. So I thought those were the pivotal leaders that I saw on my deal. And obviously in talking to Frank, Frank again has the question about the BS factor, about how we have to give back this 150,000 on a year, that how, how.
That's not the BS factor. That's, that's us having to return our, our categoricals.
Okay, but obviously he said, you're really gonna have to explain that to me, Mary, but because we're not gonna wanna endorse how you're gonna move forward with the funding. If you're getting more money and you're giving money back, that, that is earned locally. And so, and obviously that will, I'm sure, come up.
Okay.
There can't be any decisions or too much talk because this is, you know, yeah, it's informative.
These are things that can't be covered in the presentation.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And obviously what, in talking to Frank, and that probably would go for the city of Victor as well as the commissioners, that they would invite us back for a work session to talk about this. And I did get a very strong positioning that we will not favor the reformalization of the gaming impact funds. And basically that they can't trust the legislature, that if that's done through an act of legislation, that they, their monies can be cut even, even further.
Who's their monies?
The city of Kribble Creeks.
Oh.
And so it was very firm about that and I, I was not surprised. So that's kind of where I'm at, just to give you an update on all of this.
Can I just put this out here, just because city of Victor with Barb Manning being the mayor and I sit on the school board, how do we, I think, I wouldn't, on the city council, it would be a conflict of interest.
You would have to recuse yourself. If, if we floated, yeah, if we asked the city of Victor to do a sales tax for the school district, yes, you could not vote on it.
Right.
But we could still ask.
Right.
You know?
I'm just saying, it's just.
And I do believe that, again, there'll need to be a lot of talk before this presentation. But I, you know, you gave Connie and I that, we, you had the, when we had our board retreat, you gave us a copy of your presentation. I believe that Donna and Gary Lou and Stanley need a copy of the presentation also so that it's, again, you can be informed and we can make sure that we cover the ground in terms of any kind of questions. I, I mean, I think, but I, I have to tell you, when I gave out the invitations, everybody said, Trade Center, mini factory? They said, wow, you know, so there was a lot of real positivity to the fact that, wow, this is a real accomplishment.
And so that presentation was just for the, our retreat, I'm bulking it up for our March 20th meeting.
Yeah, but I was just thinking that if we, if they had a chance to read it over, that they could inform you of any kind of questions that they're gonna get before you craft this.
Can Mary move on another copy to my work email?
Do you want to know about the people that I invited?
Yeah, go forward.
So, you know, I really, my thing is we really need to get out in the county and just in the city level. So I invited Wendy Dillon Snyder and Greg Liverman. Wendy is on telephonic planning commission. She's generational, the property she lives on is generational. Her husband has a background in rural connectivity and right now he's actually teaching genealogy classes all over the state, but they are very connected to a lot of different people who we may need to call on at some point in time in the future. And they were very excited about being included since they're not like in the city, they're out in the county talking to people. So, and then I also talked to Mike Beatty, who's on our housing test force, he's the developer up here that's plenty of putting in all those single family homes and a bunch of apartments and doing those townhomes down by the bank. He's very, very literally financially invested in Kribble Creek, but also humanly invested. He's looking beyond just stuff and quality of life, contributing to the parks. He's gonna talk, start conversations with people about daycare needs and facilities. He really cares about this whole community, it's not just a, a one and done situation. And he is also very excited to get more information and see where he can plug in. So that's why I wrote that route. And then Jeff said he would be happy to come and say whatever he needed to say about how it's working.
So when you send this out on the email, would you make sure that you attach this to it?
The, with the invitations, Mary?
Yeah.
Yes.
Because Milford made comment at the council about the newsletter. And so, but I wasn't sure that the rest of the council, and we have two new council members, which is Jared Bowman and Bruce Brown.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's what I need to talk about that piece.
So any additional board attended events between now and our April board meeting?
Okay, so I have one on the 9th, that's a conversation about the track. Stan, I will be planning on participating in that.
On the 9th?
Uh huh. March 2nd? It's a zoo.
Is anyone else gonna participate? Cause that wouldn't be a majority.
No, it's too early for Connie.
Okay.
Why, what time is it?
It's at three. No, I mean too early in the process.
Too early in volume yet.
And then I have one on the 20th, which is our big thing. And then I don't know who here besides Connie is participating in the 20. And then, I don't know who here besides Connie is participating in the twenty sec, I can't remember the dates.
Twenty second and twenty third.
Twenty second and twenty third. Which is, which is the work.
The, the steering committee for park and rec.
Oh. Recreation needs assessment, but it's open to the public.
Okay.
And I would not be attending that.
Me neither.
I don't see any reason why I would.
I don't count.
Stan and I meet at the post office every now and then.
BOSI's.
Yeah, we kind of run into each other there.
And our regular BOSI's meeting is on the twenty first.
Okay, then.
Frank, thank you all.
Boy, we've got a lot happening.
Okay, next, update on maintenance, upgrade, construction.
We had our kickoff meeting with the superintendent and the manager in charge of construction. They, we actually met with them, Merrill about to meet with them virtually today, just kind of keeping her updated on, on what she, what they expect her to do, you know, what she needs to do, but there's not a lot that can move forward until they can get in here and do the work, and that's not gonna happen. It, it's kind of in a hold process right now.
Another hold name.
Huh?
Another hold.
Yeah.
Okay, so next is track information.
So. That was, it's been really interesting to kind of figure out where the conversation fell apart and things happened. And with Tammy's help, I did track down the guy that I found at the Casby Conference last year, not last one, one before that. And it was interesting when that was going on, because all of my sports people that are coaches and stuff, you know, they thought a track should cost us about five hundred thousand dollars. And then I almost had a heart attack last year when we were told like one point one million, and I'm like, oh my God, how can that be? And so I tracked down this man, had a conversation with him. He said, well, we were under the impression that the district wanted like an Olympic level track. I said, no. We want a nice, safe, tested, qualified facility track. We're not doing Friday night lights, we're not doing underground water, we're just doing a nice track so that it's safe and our kids can participate. He said, oh, well, then you're looking at about five hundred thousand, which is kind of what it should have been. And yes, I did tell my, oh, Air Force coach, she was right in the first place. So, along that line comes some ways that we can save money, which is if we can get local contractors or maybe the mine or somebody to chop up what we have. There are going to be some costs, it has to be engineered by a certified track engineer, which I didn't even know existed until. And we also have to have a survey. And so I called the surveyor that I use regularly, and he said, yes, he had experience doing that shoot. And then he said, you know, I have kids. So he said, either I will do it at a discount or for free and donate that to the project.
Good.
So, the engineer will know a little bit more on Thursday, he'll probably be about two thousand dollars. The survey, we also wrote about two thousand dollars, but that might be a gimme. I had lunch with Caitlin about something totally different, and we talked about the track, just kind of went that way. And they are interested in participating, so we don't know what that level is going to be or what's gonna be involved with that. I'm hoping Stan can be the chew it up conversation person, because I have no idea if that involves. But Bob from Academy Track said it's possible what's chewed up might be able to be used as base.
Last where I learned is how much it had to be chewed up if it was just gonna be broke up and hauled off, so.
Well, yeah, if it can be chewed up enough to be used as base, that will save us tons of money from hauling in product. That's why I need to bring, because that's not my thing.
Give me more information on that Zoom call too, and I'll.
Okay, I'll shoot it to you.
I'll attend that. Yeah, and I will check into chewing that up. I think I should probably, I could probably do that myself, I think. Probably have to rent an asphalt chewer, but.
Yeah, and you know, the mine may have something that does that, I don't know, that's kind of not where my.
Yeah, I don't know why they.
World place. But anyway, I, I'm kind of encouraged with where that has come so far, because we just need to, you know, here's a plan, what do we have to do? He said the engineer would tell us what has to happen, what order it has to happen, but that's part of the fee that he gets paid to make that plan out and lay it out, and then we have to start hitting grants, so. And Tammy said we have some money in our track fund already.
Yeah, we, we have about six, seven thousand dollars.
So that'll cover that preliminary engineering and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And so then, I'm gonna rely on some of these magical grant reader people to write grants, because I don't do that anymore.
Okay, thank you, Donna.
You betcha.
Appreciate your initiative, and yours too, Stanley. Okay, so then, next, I need a motion to go into executive session. And this executive session will.
The verbiage, Mary, is on the bottom.
Okay, and you'll have to, you'll have, whoever makes the motion will read this. And that is to be the board members, and then with Miriam attending at the, in halfway, or, yes. Okay? So.
I do have a personnel matter I need to discuss with you all as well.
Okay, okay. So, may I have somebody that will read this motion then?
I move that the Board of Education convene into an executive session to discuss CRS subsection twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four F. Personnel matters at this time, all individuals who are not invited must vacate the boardroom and/or any virtual meetings.
Okay, and Miriam's got one that she needs to bring up.
Yeah.
Should we just do her first, and then she can go out?
I was kind of thinking that, the, yes.
Okay.
Okay, and.